On behalf of the Brooklyn Park, Osseo, Maple Grove League of Women Voters, I would like to welcome you to the Osseo School Board District 279, excuse me, to the Osseo School District 279 School Board Candidates Forum. I'm Cindy Shovlin-Woodcock, moderator for tonight's discussion. The forum will run from 6:30 until 7:30. The Brooklyn Park, Osseo, Maple Grove League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political party or candidates. The League of Women Voters has a longstanding history of providing unbiased candidate and issue information that is widely used by voters regardless of their political beliefs. We sponsor tonight's forum as a public service to the community. It is your opportunity to hear the candidates discuss important issues face-to-face. Views expressed tonight are those of the candidates and not those of the Brooklyn Park, Osseo, Maple Grove League of Women Voters. We will post the video, complete, unedited, of the forums on our, on the CCX website and also on the League of Women Voters Facebook page. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of the candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. We will start the forum tonight with candidate open statements. Each candidate will be given two minutes for their opening and closing statements. Opening statements will be in alphabetical order, whereas closing statements will be in random order. Throughout the forum, the order for answering questions will be rotated. Candidates will have one minute to respond to questions. Candidates, please note, there are timekeepers who will signal you by raising signs when you have 15 seconds and when the ti- when it is time to stop talking. You may complete your sentence, but you cannot bring up another topic. All right. We work really hard to gather questions that are meaningful to, for the forums. I think it's interesting to note that we, before the forum even started today, we had more than 80 questions for the candidates. So, to pare that down to 10 or 12 is going to be a little challenging. So, I think you'll be getting lots of questions at home. All right. So, let us begin with the opening statements from, from each candidate for the Osseo School District 279 School Board. Please begin, Melody Brinkley.
Hello, everyone. It's such an honor to be here tonight. As a former educator, I had to wrestle with and write down my philosophy of education. First and foremost, every student can learn. And secondly, Horace Mann, American father of public education, said this. Education then, beyond all other devices of human origin, is the great equalizer of the conditions of men, the balance wheel of the social machinery. I believe this so deeply to my core. Every scholar in our district deserves the very best education we can give them. Our teachers are capable, our students are ready. Along with parent guardian partnership, we can set our scholars up for success regardless of which school they attend. This conviction compels me to run for school board in our great District 279.
Thank you. Kelsey Dawson-Watson.
Walton.
Walton, I did it. I'm sorry, I did it. I wrote it down and everything.
All right. Good evening. My name is Kelsey Dawson-Walton. I am the current chair of the Osseo Area School Board, and I'm running for reelection. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this very important forum this evening. I also want to thank my family for their support. I know my mom and daughter are on their way. My husband's holding on the fort, running our three kids their activities. I'm sure many of you can understand. My roots are in Brooklyn Park, and my adolescence through the transition into adulthood was spent in Brooklyn Park. And my husband and I now are raising our four children in Maple Grove. All of our children proudly attend Osseo Public Schools. I work at Hennepin County, leading enterprise-wide strategic engagement throughout the organization, and have been there since I finished my work in Washington DC, working for the late Honorable Representative Jim Ramstead. I have extensive volunteer experience, serving at various schools in the district and district committees, as well as my church, Girl Scouts, served on various community boards, and most recently chaired the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. My master's degrees is in public policy and leadership. My undergrad is in poli- political science with a minor in African-American cultural studies from St. Thomas. Service to others and education is at the core of my values. I'm running for reelection to the school board, Osseo School Board, because the educational future of our district is at a critical crossroads for our scholars. As a parent, I'm very invested and dedicated to the success of our 21,000 students. I'm proudly endorsed by Education Minnesota, and like last election, I intentionally have not sought a political party endorsement or support. This seat is nonpartisan. My passion is to strengthen community by building bridges necessary to set our district on a sustainable path to excellence. I'm proud of the work I've led and shared to set a bold and powerful vision and strategic directions for our district. My top priorities are that it's imperative we have safe and welcoming schools, we stay true to high academic achievement, and we ensure long-term sustainability. I look forward to engaging more dialogue over the next hour. Thank you.
You didn't know it was going to be a challenge, did you?
I know. I was like, I'm going to keep going.
We thought we'd just add a few things in here. Okay. Sarah Mitchell.
Hi, friends and neighbors. My name is Sarah Mitchell, and I'm excited to be running for the Osseo School Board in November. I am the daughter of two dedicated retired Minnesota teachers who demonstrated for me what it looks like to serve. This was the foundation that ignited my passion to volunteer within our local Osseo Area Public School classrooms, OMGBA Maple Grove High School Girls Tennis, and Musical Theater, as well as serving as a children's ministry teacher for over 15 years at my church in Maple Grove called the Grove Church. I'm running for the Osseo School Board because I care about the well-being of all of our children, not just my own three children who are in the district as well. I desire to help grow a culture where it's the norm, that all families are invested in our schools and work together for the success of all of our learners. To this end, I would advocate that our schools keep the main thing, the main thing, quality education taught to high standards. Our school board and administration must represent all students equally and work with parents and families to support them. Together, we can work to make Osseo Area Schools the top choice for families in our district and beyond. Thank you so much for your consideration. I'm respectfully asking for your vote on November 8th, and if elected, I will wholeheartedly serve and put our students first. Thank you.
Ladon Severin.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for caring enough about our youth to be here tonight. I've been teaching kids of various ages for the past 30 years, never on a payroll, but volunteering, teaching Sunday School or small group youth scenarios. When I became a mom, it was a huge adjustment. I'd been a very driven high school and college student, task-oriented, always wanting to achieve. So, I really started praying for a mother's heart coming into the big adjustment of parenthood. God really did answer, because I not only feel that mama bear heart for my six kids, but their whole generation. I'll be out and about noticing teens, working in retail and fast food landscaping, and I just think, gosh, I'm so thankful for these youth, and I really hope we're doing a good job for them. My husband and I spent nine years in the Fridley School District, where the moms group I led brought crockpots of soup and trays of dessert for our teachers on conference nights, plus weekly prayer support on our own time. When our family moved to Brooklyn Park, a couple of my kids went to Brooklyn Middle, participated in sports through Park Center High School. I enjoyed going to their events and sharing their teams on, obviously. As a family with six kids ranging from first to 12th grade, we have a cumulative 31 years of public school under our belt, 10 years of homeschooling, three years of private school, and one year so far of PSEO. Throughout these years, we've sought to be an involved family. That's a blessing to the schools through our volunteering, participation, donations, and encouragement. I'll end with a quote from the former principal of Fridley Elementary School that we spent so many years at. "Ladon, I so appreciate your support all those years through your Moms Prayer Group. You're a great candidate, a humble person, and I know you will be willing to do whatever is necessary to support the schools and make the most of whatever resources are available. You were always so supportive of our teachers and the work being done in the classroom."
Thank you. Tanya Simmons.
Good evening. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this candidate forum, and to all those in attendance tonight, online, and who submitted questions via email. My name is Tanya Simons. I currently serve on the Osseo Area School District 279 Board. I'm running for reelection because I believe we can and must improve the educational outcomes of every single scholar in our district and ensure a thriving school district that benefits all stakeholders of our community. I'm a 20-year Brooklyn Park resident. I serve on the boards of and in leadership of multiple community organizations, and I've worked with youth my entire life. As a business program leader for high schoolers, a big sister, a youth mentor, a high school track and cross-country coach. My professional background is finance, continuous improvement, and organizational change. I have worked for local Fortune 500 companies for 22 years, used my professional expertise to help nonprofits develop and grow, and previously served on the Brooklyn Park Budget Advisory Commission. I served in the role of vice chair in 2019 and served as treasurer in each of the other three years. The educational system of Minnesota is in challenging times, but we can be the district that solves these challenges and shines as an example as to what is possible. We will do this by focusing on academic achievement in all that we do and enlisting parents and community members to come together in a single effort to drive high standards, expectations, curriculum, and support. We will do this by creating a culture of excellence that recognizes and encourages teachers and staff to identify concerns and issues and to bring their ideas forward in solutions. We will create systems of mentorship and scholar-driven goal-setting. We will create a culture that says yes. What will it take to do this? And what can I do to support you instead of saying no or focusing on barriers? We will engage parents on the issues they see firsthand in their children's experiences, and we will develop issue-focused parent and staff engagement committees. This is what is possible at the school board that leads and focuses on ideas, solutions, empowerment, and engagement of all stakeholders. I'm looking forward to productive evening and challenging conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your opening statements and for giving the audience a chance to learn a little bit about you. Now, we'll start with the first question, and it's a compilation of multiple questions, so we pulled them all together. And the order of answering will be Tanya, Sarah, Melody, Kelsey, number four, and Ladon, number five. Okay? So, here's the question. As an adult, in what ways have you been involved with, supported District 279 schools? For example, parent of a child attending the district, a PTO member, a district advisory committee member, a classroom volunteer, a fundraiser event volunteer, substitute teacher, or other staff member? And I will repeat the question if you want me to. So, Tanya.
Sure. So, as a 20-year Brooklyn Park resident, I've been involved in supporting the school district in a number of ways. I've served on Rotary, supporting our schools as reading in the classroom, in hats and mittens. During my time on the board, I've definitely participated in the student mock interviews. I've attended many district events, and recently, I've served on the 279 Committee, and I've been at all of the 279 Foundation events in support of those efforts. So, as a Brooklyn Park resident, 279 scholars are my community members and are individuals who I've continued to serve. I also serve with Parenting With Purpose, who has a program at Park Center as well. So, my community involvement has greatly centered on the youth of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Mitchell.
Thank you. That's a great question. As a parent, I've been involved in this district for the past 12 years. I have a senior in high school, so I think one of my strengths is I have a child in high school, I have a student, a child in middle school, and an elementary school. So, I get the pulse of the, all the different levels there. One of my favorite things has been being engaged in class, in the classrooms, and especially reading with students. I love the one-on-one engagement with students, especially in elementary school. I've also been volunteering, as parents know, in the sports world in our community. They call it dibs, or different volunteering, from Osseo Maple Grove Basketball to the Football Youth Association, tennis, musical theater. So, it's really fun to get a diverse group of kids, that you could engage with kids and also families. I've also been in the supportive role. My husband's been an Osseo Maple Grove basketball coach for the last seven years, and our family's been involved in that way. So, I think it's a huge privilege to be able to be back in the classrooms and face-to-face with our students and helping support our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Melody Brinkley.
Yes. So, my introduction to Osseo Area Public Schools was actually when I was an administrator at a private school in Brooklyn Park. Our family has been in the area since 2006. I think that's when I moved to Brooklyn Park. And I've had a lot of opportunity to participate and interact with public schools even before my kids were actually in them. So, when I was an administrator, we partnered with Crestview Elementary. I was an administrator overall, student leadership, and so, our seniors and our student councils would go and do the field days, so that Crestview could have field days. And I got to know the staff that way, and it was incredible, and I had an immediate connection to the belief that this is a truly great school district if these are how the teachers interact. I've also been the secretary, and this last year, the vice chair of DPAC. I'm obviously a parent of an Osseo High School student, and I coached several little teams of OMGBA throughout the years.
Thank you. Ladon.
Do you want me to go? I was the number four, Cindy, Kelsey.
Did I do that again? I see. I'm sorry. Kelsey, I'm really not out for you. Yes, you're right. You're number four.
All right. Yeah, so I, having four kids in the district, like Sarah, I mean, I have a senior, I have a sixth grader, I have a fifth grader, and a kindergartner, so there's, and they're all involved, from swimming to basketball, so for sure, sports, you know, and then I've been, served in the role of PTO Events Coordinator. I'm currently going to be chairing, or being the volunteer lead for a senior all-night party. But more than, and even more than that, as a school board member, I'm part of our enrollment capacity committee, and actually started the RISE Committee to really engage our families, particularly our families who haven't always been represented in our district, strengthen the relationship with AIPAC, or American Indian Parent Advisory Council, too, as well as we're starting a Legislative Action Committee to really involve our families across the district to really, so we're knowing what to advocate for at the legislature, so that will be coming soon. And so, I've done everything from arts volunteer to popcorn maker in schools to vision and hearing screening, so I've been really involved with our school district.
Thank you. Now, it's your turn, Ladon.
Yeah. My main involvement was just at Brooklyn Middle and Park Center, when a couple of my kids went there, just with their sports and the different activities that they were doing there. My oldest daughter does teach for community ed swim lessons, so she's often over there as well.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Question number two. The order is Ladon, Tanya, Kelsey, Melody, and Sarah. And here is the question. How will you close the achievement gap?
I propose opening a Modified Learning Room, or MLR, for the elementary schools, and Intervention Study Hall at the secondary schools. Mandatory study hall would mitigate the bulk of our achievement gap, as the gap is primarily one of home-life variables. Struggling students would be identified each year by first try midterm grades and be automatically enrolled for second and third trimester. And we're not talking traditional study hall, where the kids are chilling out, playing games on their cellphone. This would be actually completing their homework time and academic intervention time. Secondly, the MLR for the elementaries. This was a pilot project with amazing results that my dad spent the last decade of his teaching career on. It was highly utilized room, performing both academic and behavioral interventions simultaneously. Kids disrupting the class could instantly be sent to the MLR, who'd been absent to go catch up. Gifted students could go enjoy academic challenges that my dad had ready for them, and kids who weren't grasping concepts could get tutoring and catch up. When they started the MLR in 91, their school was among the bottom three to four elementaries in the district, and within five years, they were among the top three.
Thank you. Tanya.
So, our district has initiated several new efforts to improve curriculum, to drive academic outcomes for all students. I think closing the achievement gap means that we are singly focused on achievement for every single student. One of the things that I think that we need to do better at is engaging community. We have many different organizations who are asking to be involved. We have not given them a single directive and a single mission. I think that we need to have an achievement forum. I need, we, I think we need to ask all of our community members to participate and engage in driving outcomes for our students. I think we should initiate 100% mentorship program and initiative, and there's a ton of ways that we can do that in school and outside of school. We need to engage our community partners that are already supporting youth, like the Organization of Liberians in Minnesota. They've been asking us to engage. So, we can be working with those organizations who are already partnering with their families and with those students, so both in school and after school, in addition to the current curriculum and intervention efforts that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelsey.
Yeah, the ever-present glaring achievement gap that everybody seems to talk about and have answers to, I would say that it starts with our families, engaging our caregivers, and ensuring that we're listening to them, to know what's the best for their families and problem solve together. But you can't get achievement if you don't have a welcoming and safe environment, and I, you just can't get away from that. If you don't feel welcome and safe, and if you're not showing up in, you know, what we're, what we're reading, or what we're talking about, or who, looking at the teachers and representation, you know, we're not going to even touch closing that achievement gap. I also think that, you know, we need to really lean on our educators, who are in the classrooms every single day, and see what's going on and what's working and what's not working. And I, you know, and I think we continue to be creative and looking at what are some different solutions? How do we partner better with our cities and, and with our, with our other organizations to ensure that this is the top priority? And also legislatively hold our legislature accountable as well to provide the resources to actually close that achievement gap.
Thank you. Melody.
Sure. This is multifaceted. Firstly, support at home is one of the number-one indicators of success for students. And so, strategic training on how to partner with parents for teachers, I received it as a teacher. It was actually, one of my secret superpowers was parent partnership, to get my students who were struggling to achieve, to achieve. Secondly, in my, my participation this year in DPAC, we were talking about the fact that teacher retention and representation is a huge factor in student success. Obviously, we need teachers that are competent and capable and confident in the classroom, and that comes through years of experience and retention within our doors. And so, we actually have already put something into place with that. Remediation, I think we need to get creative about remediation, and it needs to differ from site to site based on needs that the sites present, based on students' specific needs. I've been a part of a California distinguished school that was the only school succeeding with these creative measures in a failing district in Southern California. So, those are some of my ideas.
Thank you. Okay. Question number three.
Oh, I still need to answer.
I apologize.
Keeping you on your toes tonight.
Yeah.
Yes, the achievement gap, this is a challenge throughout the state of Minnesota, throughout the country right now. I think the number one, what the, what this starts with is having equal opportunities for all of our students, and that truly means doing our best to have an equal playing field for all of our students to receive the support that they need. I think, secondly, we need to remove distractions and focus on the main thing, which is academics. We need to remove distractions and focus on especially literacy right now. Currently, more than half of the students in our district cannot read at grade level, and this is very concerning. Literacy is a top, reading is a top subject for all other subjects, you know, build upon that. And third, research shows that a student has greater academic success when at least one parent is involved or engaged in their academic experience. So, we need to get creative and intentional in order to do this and increase academic success for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we're going to go to question number three, and the order is Sarah, Melody, Ladon, Tanya, and Kelsey. And I will not forget you, Kelsey. I promise I will not forget you. Okay? Question number three. What do you think are the biggest challenges and opportunities our district is facing right now? And Sarah, whenever you're ready.
I think the biggest challenge right now is student achievement, which is why I think it's so important to make our number-one focus in schools, to go back to the main thing, which is why are students in school? Academics and learning. So, I think this is a challenge, but this is also exciting, that we can get refocused on the main thing. We have so many amazing teachers and educators in our district. I know my own kids have experienced this for the past 12 years, and so, I think, again, empowering the teachers, it is a challenge retaining the excellent teachers, but that's a top priority to retain those quality, amazing teachers that we have in our district. Thank you.
Melody.
I think one of our greatest focuses is unity. I think it's no secret that there's a lot of different ideas about how to even address the achievement gap, and I think that if our focus gets narrow on literacy, math, the basic fundamentals of education, and we are focused to this end, and we get together with people maybe we don't normally agree with on other things, unity is powerful. So, number one, as a district, if we choose that we're going to be unified, even with people maybe we don't always agree with, on behalf of students for their achievement, I think we're going to get great gains, number one. Number two, I think ours district is so full of incredible administrators, teachers, committed volunteers, and we have such an opportunity, if you are a parent in the district or even just a community member, to support teachers, educators, leadership. That's another way we're going to gain ground, and we have that awesome opportunity right now.
Thank you. Ladon.
I have a list called Envision, and so, I'm just going to read from that, see how far I get. I'd like to see increased knowledge and utilization of PSEO, CLEP, and privately-funded opportunities such as Home Depot's tuition reimbursement program, and Lowe's Track to the Trades. I'd like to see that coming from our career centers. Holding the respect and responsibility bar high equally for all of our students, laying down the law, basically, in the classroom, and being able to do, get some good education done. Swiftly disciplining bullying or abuse of any sort by having a green list of sorts of discipline ideas that our teachers are allowed to use. Replacing some of our existing teacher workshops with workshops specifically aimed at filling their classroom management and discipline toolbox, I would recommend Love and Logic or resources from the Center for Relationship Education. Implementing an MLR, which I already mentioned, in all of our elementary schools. Tackling the achievement gap with mandatory study hall, which I already mentioned, and teachers being free to teach their subject with honesty and integrity.
Thank you, Ladon. Tanya.
All right. So, as we've discussed, we know the outcomes that we are seeing in terms of achievement and the overall outcomes for all of our students are declining, so that, we know that that's the problem. The question is, what's the root cause that's really driving that? And so, we do know, actually, from our student survey and our staff survey, that we have excellent teachers. We score in the high 70% to 80% in terms of what students are saying about how they're learning from our teachers. So, from in terms of opportunity, that's really our strength. We have amazing career-pathing opportunities. When a student finds something that they love and ignites their passion, that drives them to succeed in other areas. So, from opportunities, that's our strengths going in. But where our challenges are, are the teacher shortage. We don't have staff to cover the needs. Our teachers are being tasked to do more than they ever have before. They are not mental health professionals, they are not behavior specialists. We need to have that support system around them. We have to provide that surround to them. Behavior in the classrooms has been loud and clear as a problem, so we need to continue to raise those standards. We need to support teachers, listens to teachers, and bring their ideas forward.
Oh, sorry, stop. All right. Kelsey.
I would say the greatest challenge we have right now is long-term sustainability. That's inclusive of our funding, our teachers of color, our teachers, any of our educators, and filling those positions, our class sizes, academic supports, mental health. We are, you know, 85%, we're a people business, so 85% of our budget is toward people, and we need, that, that is the greatest challenge right now in the times that we're in, in our, when our economy, in our state, and frankly, the country. I would say our greatest opportunity, hands down, are scholars. We're the fourth-most diverse district in every single way across the state of Minnesota. I was just at a state high school league convening that brought scholars together through all, all the Twin Cities metro area, and it was beautiful. Their ideas were, I mean, they're brilliant, you could, you can hear their ideas of how things can change and how we can encourage a welcoming environment for all and extracurricular activities, and so, hands down, our scholars are our greatest asset and opportunity.
Thank you very much. All right. Question number four. What is one thing you would like to improve for District 279 students and staff that you have the ability to influence? you have the ability to influence as a school board member? And the order of questions is Kelsey, answers, excuse me, Kelsey, LaDon, Tanya, Sarah, and Melody.
The one thing that I, to me, that is the most important is how we engage and involve our community, our scholars, our families. There's no way we're going to address achievement. There's no way we're going to solve the problems that we're faced with and challenges today without a wraparound approach. And it's multi-pronged, and it is, can be complex. But together, I believe that as a school board, we set the vision to make that engagement a priority, and that is under our purview. And that's the one thing I would, that I think is the most important that we can improve on.
Thank you. LaDon?
I would like to influence our career counselors. Again, in our high schools, we all, we have these career centers, and they are a wealth of knowledge, our career counselors. I want them to visit every ninth-grade classroom twice a year to plant seeds about resources like PSEO, but also less-known resources like the CLEP program, in which students of any age can test out of some of their generals for college. Our oldest daughter has saved thousands of dollars by passing CLEP exams in 10th and 11th grade. And then, I also mentioned Home Depot and Lowe's. They have these great tuition payment programs for people getting into the trades that work for them. So, I want, so, ninth grade is key because taking advantage of these types of resources takes advanced planning. Some kids are wired that way, or they have parents that are pushing them, but some don't. So, by getting our career counselors into every ninth-grade classroom, we're raising the morale, showing all of our scholars that there are ways to navigate the system and make it work for you. Similarly, I want the career counselors to get into every 10th-grade English class and write a simple resume.
Thank you. Tanya?
Yeah, so, there's actually many things we can do right now and influence as a board member. To me, one of the most important things that I've talked about for the entire time I've been on the board is a third-party feedback and reporting system. Our teachers are not being heard. Less than 50% of them participated in the staff survey. Our teachers are telling us they have ideas, they have needs, they're not being supported, and they're not being listened to. A third-party reporting system would gather the information like most private organizations have from the teachers and our staff and bring that directly to the board for review and action. We need to stop talking, and we need to start acting, taking action. Engagement, absolutely. We have committees that we wait until the end of the year to hear the reports. Why are we not addressing these with problem-solving committees comprised of parents and teachers and community members with solutions who want to be part of the problem-solving? They're asking us to be involved, and we're waiting till the end of the year to hear what they have to say. So, those are two things that I would do right now, and I think we can do. We can also do 100% mentorship. That's something I'm very passionate about, that there's so many people that want to participate in supporting our students inside and outside of school.
Thank you.
Well, with the heart of a parent, I think the top priority that I would like to address as a school board member and as a parent in this community is addressing behavior concerns in our schools. Kids need to feel safe in order to thrive, in order to have academic success. Unfortunately, enrollment is down in our district, and families, many wonderful families that I know personally have left at an alarming rate, and this is due to the fact that their kids don't feel safe and behaviors have not been addressed. This is a concern, and I believe every student deserves to thrive and have a safe and positive learning environment. It's a proven fact that kids need boundaries in order to thrive. So, I think, first things first, I would like to address this issue and have appropriate expectations and consequences. As I talk to families in the community, this, everyone is in agreement that this is a top concern and priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Melody?
Okay, number one, parent guardian partnership and engagement is the very first way I would see what kind of accountable measures we have at every site where we are reaching out to partner with parents because we solve two things in that regard. There's student academic success that will increase and also restorative redirection of behavior. When you partner with a parent for a student's success, you're going to gain far more traction with that child and with that family. If there's partnership on that level, you'll watch disciplinary incidents reduced just with that alone. So, that would be my top priority. Also, removing any kind of ceilings for student, for students to go as far as they possibly can academically. In elementary school, it is not too early to be addressing and pushing students who are able to go farther. Our tag program is something I would immediately focus on and look into and see what we are actively doing to train our teachers to effectively have students go as far as they possibly can.
Thank you. Okay. Question number five, the order will be Melody, Tanya, LaDon, Sarah, and Kelsey. Do you support the building a better future levy questions? Why or why not?
I do support it. We have not raised taxes for school in a little over nine years, and since then, infrastructure has changed and been impacted. We have, we don't have a sustainable budget that will continue to perform at the levels we are currently performing. I, I think that when people are talking and demanding academic excellence, which we all want, it comes with a price tag. Things are not cheaper right now. Every family is feeling probably that strain of extra cost, and schools are as well. To be able to keep up with what we're doing and then go beyond, that is something we have to invest in. And so, yes, I do, in fact, support it.
Thank you. Tanya?
Yes, I do support the referendums. The two items are the technology level and the increase in our per-pupil funding, which is our contribution to our general funding. The majority of funding does come from the state, averaged about 2%. And so, when we think about our portion of the local levy, which has not been raised in nine years, I do support that it's necessary. I'm really proud of the financial processes of this district. We have won awards for our fiscal stewardship and our strong positioning. The technology foundation has changed dramatically since nine years ago. So, this is core infrastructure. This involves security and safety of our students. And again, the per-pupil, having not raised in nine years, I think is reasonable at this time. I think it's wise to get ahead of our funding needs, and that way, we're not coming back every year, every two years to ask for more financial support. So, I am supportive of it. I do hear that taxpayers do feel strained. So, I completely understand when taxpayers say, "I really want to support our schools." I'm just not sure if I can. So, it's going to be up to every individual voter, and that's the beauty of it, to move it to the voters and let you decide.
Thank you. LaDon?
I am in support of the referendum because of the culture, the, the economy right now under Biden. We all understand that everything is more expensive, much more expensive. And so, you just need to do it. And also, as the other ladies have mentioned, it's normal to have a new referendum every 10 years. So, we're coming in a little bit early, but it's understandable that we, we need these funds to keep going, to keep going strong. The first part is mainly for just kind of keeping the ball rolling with a lot of the staffing, especially with the mental health additional supports that we have done lately with the COVID money, and just to keep that going and to sustain that for a little bit longer, we do need the referendum. And then, the second part, you know, for the I-2-T-2 and the safety and security, just really trying to beef up the whole camera system, do some upgrades that have been needed for the exterior cameras, and then the, the two-way radios as well, updating those throughout the different buildings. So, I do support it.
Thank you.
I support detailed plans. I support detailed plans for spending on the operating and technology needs levies. The first is a replacement of an existing levy and will be used to keep classroom sizes at current levels. The second is a technology levy that's an increase from previous levels. I strongly believe it is important to steward taxpayer dollars wisely and prudently, and I do not take these increases lightly. However, because of the ever-changing needs and requirements of technology for running a modern school in this world, I also believe that the funding produced by this levy is needed. Thank you.
Kelsey?
A thousand percent, I support this. I mean, 50% of our budget weighs really in the balance as we have these two questions on the ballot. Just to ensure we can maintain the level of services that we're, we're at, and like I mentioned before, we're a people business, 85% of our budget funds our staff, and we serve, we serve people. We need people to serve, we serve our scholars, we need people to serve as well. And so, you know, if, without this renewal, we aren't able to, to ensure, to increase like safety, that we're doing the level of service that we have and, and adding more and mental health services and key academic interventions. I mean, all the things that people are very, very concerned about, and I am as well as a parent, to ensure that we have safe schools. And so, that is what's at stake here. So, I absolutely to, to support that, to ensure that we have the support for our students.
Thank you. Question number six, the order of responding is Kelsey, Sarah, Melody, LaDon, and Tanya. Question number six is, what would you like to change in terms of safety on campus? Specifically, fights, discipline, behavior issues, and other issues that happen at school, not outside threats. Do you think our schools are currently safe?
So, that's a two questions. What was the, say the first part again.
Okay. What would you like to change in terms of safety on campus? Specifically, fights, discipline, behavior issues, and other issues that happen at school, not outside threats. Do you think our schools are currently safe?
Yes, I know our schools are safe. And in terms of what would like to change without, with fights and discipline and behavior issues, well, I wish we wouldn't have them, but we do. And so, what we need, we need to ensure, you know, that we're funded in a way, that we can add additional staff that we, we need. We've taught, you know, I feel like I'm kind of a broken record. We need families engaged and caregivers engaged. We need to continue our relationship with our law enforcement agencies. We need to continue our relationship with community organizations, and we need to continue our relationships with cities. But really, at the heart of it is the relationships within the schools. We need relationships, our scholars need to feel safe and welcome enough to have relationships with a trusted adult because when you have a trusted adult in one building, your trajectory is very positive and you are, you're, you will have that ability to just, to really believe in yourself. I mean, education really is about unlocking our dreams of all of our youth. We're on, want to unleash our, our vision is to unleash the brilliance of each and every scholar. And so, I really believe that, yes, our schools are safe, and we need to really work on those relationships to ensure that everyone feels safe and welcomed and motivated.
Sarah?
I believe strongly that every student deserves and has the right to a safe and positive learning environment. My dad is a retired middle school teacher. He taught for 36 years, and his motto has always been, "Put out the small fires first." Behavior disturbances have increased, and we need to address these rising issues with both clear expectations and accountability of the consequences. We need to create a culture of mutual respect, and that means mutual respect of students with other students and also mutual respect of students toward teachers. Research clearly shows that kids need and desire boundaries in order to thrive. Unfortunately, we are losing teachers that are amazing and amazing families due to disrespectful behavior by students. I believe currently right now, when I talk to my students, my three children coming out of middle school, schools are not as safe as they should be, and we do need to make this a top priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Melody?
Sure, I'm going to answer the second part first. I think perception is reality for many, and as I talk to community members more and more, there's a feeling of unsafety. And as I go to board meetings, I'm seeing that safety plans are in place, so there's a clear disconnect between felt and what, what plans are or how they're being executed. And I see that as something I'd like to change. First of all, I'd love to examine our restorative and redirection discipline policies, especially at schools with the greatest concern, and follow up with what kind of accountability is set in place for teachers, for administrators? How are they communicating and connecting together with parents to partner for student success and reduce behaviors? And so, really, I, I do believe that a safe, our schools are generally safe. I think that there are some safety issues that have to be addressed, and it will be addressed through really reexamining our policies when it comes to discipline and following through with accountability.
Our schools are safe if we follow the excellent policies that are already in our policy handbook, such as Policy 514, anti-bullying policy. Excellent policy. So, if we can recommit to follow our existing policies, we'll be doing great. However, we've been dicing the data by skin color, and we've been tying the hands of our teachers, and that's ridiculous. If you expect that teacher to be in charge of an entire classroom and keep order and get some quality education done, you cannot tie their hands. They need to be able to enforce the policies. In fact, the policy says that we will do our best to investigate, respond, remediate, and discipline such acts. So, we must free our teachers to discipline once again. My dad was a teacher for over 40 years, and he said it was always the naughty ones who came back to see him because he held the bar high, because he knew, he gave them the dignity, that he knew they could rise to the occasion.
Tanya?
Yes, I think safety is simply non-negotiable. When a parent sends their child to school, they expect them to be safe. From our recent community meeting, we know that we have strong systems in place. However, when we think about what our students and families are reporting, I completely agree. It comes down to whether the families feel that their kids are safe at school, if their scholars are safe. When we look at our own data, elementary school, 40, only 47% reported positive that the way students behave in class makes it easy to learn, and students in class behave the way my teacher wants them to. In middle school, we saw a decline of 59% regarding how students behave in class, 67% the class is under control. It gets much better at the high school level. So, so, we do have to have the standards in place. Teachers have reported that their, their input and their consequences are being overturned, or they're not being listened to. So, we have to support our teachers, we have to have high standards, and we do have to follow our policies. But we also have to develop personal agency and a culture of respect amongst all students.
Thank you. This is the last question, and then, we'll have closing statements. So, we didn't get to 80 questions. The last question is, as a school board member, how would you respond to parents' concerns about what is being taught in the classrooms? And the order is Tanya, Sarah, Kelsey, Melody, and LaDon.
Yes, thank you. So, under state law, parents do have the right to know what is being taught in the classroom. So, that is already in place and exists. So, we know that parent engagement and partnership is core to student's success. I think teachers have been asking for parents to be involved and to be partners in their child's education. So, this isn't just about parents interested in what students are learning, but teachers desiring to engage parents in what their students are learning. So, I think we need to create new partnerships. There's been a lot of, I think, national attention that's created a distrust between the teacher and the parents, but teachers report that their parents love them and support them, and most parents report that they really appreciate their teachers. So, let's bring that back, that trust and credibility back through continued transparency and partnership. So, I think that's, again, parents have the visibility under law as to what is being taught, and I think teachers desire that. So, let's just create more mechanisms to create those partnerships and accelerate it.
Thank you. Sarah?
I believe it all comes down to trust and communication. As a board member, I would want to increase the level of trust that is apparent between our community and our school board. I think this is so important. And I think that champion, I'd like to champion regular communications between, you know, via email, text, similar to what some of our schools do in outline specific communication about schools, about curriculum. That's a lot of what I hear as I'm talking to people in the community. Parents have the right to know, and they want to know about classroom learning, they want to know about curriculum, and it is very much their right. So, I think having high trust, being very clear, we should not be hiding anything, and trust and communication is the most important thing also in the person that you're choosing to vote for as a school board candidate. Thank you.
Kelsey?
Cindy, can you repeat the question again?
Yes, I certainly can. As a school board member, how would you respond to parents' concerns about what is being taught in classrooms?
We hear a lot of things of what, you know, concerns parents have from many different perspectives. And I, you know, as a school board member, I very much support, and I know our educators online, they have a lot of their materials that people, parents, caregivers can look at. can look at. I don't think any transparency is huge, and all of our scholars, our teachers, excuse me, educators are very open and will have conversations with any of the families to inquire about what is going on in the classroom. And as a school board member, what my encouragement is to talk to your teachers and build those relationships with your teachers, because we hire the best and the brightest, and they are there to represent each and every scholar within our district, and that is how I would respond to that.
Thank you. Melody?
I would listen. As an educator for 15 years, I had to become very good at listening, and then finding trends in what I was hearing. Those recurring trends, I brought to the forefront of our attention at teachers' meetings so that we could address those things. I would do something very similar on the board. It is important that not only you bring them forth, but that trust is built not only through relationships, and that's the listening piece, but through follow-through, having something done, not just talking about it or making it a subpoint. If it's trending high enough, it needs to be addressed. It's important enough, and you will find that out if you're listening. So that's how I would deal with that.
Thank you. Ladon?
I would listen as well, and also let them know that between the different advisory committees we have, we have the District Planning Advisory Council, D-PAC, and they provide community-based input and feedback for evaluating the existing instructional programs. So that's a huge activity, a huge group committee that they could actually try to be a part of. Many parents don't know that we also have a Human Sexuality Curriculum Advisory Committee. So if their concerns were in that particular subject, I would let them know about that opportunity as well. I would also take their concerns to the larger board and would encourage them to notify me if the teachers aren't telling what the curriculum are. I would imagine 100% of our teachers are fine telling what the curriculum is to the parents, and I think it's extremely important, obviously, to listen to what the parents have to say. It's their children. They've raised them, they pay for them, they change their diapers, they woke up in the middle of the night with them. It's their right.
Okay. All right. Thank you for responding to all the questions. You now have two minutes for your closing statement. You can use this to summarize your qualifications for the position. And the order of the questions will, or the closing statements will be Ladon, Kelsey, Tanya, Sarah, and Melody.
Well, thanks again, everybody, for coming tonight. I would ask for your vote on November 8th or early, tomorrow is early voting, it starts. I'm running for school board due to my concerns for this generation, as I've already mentioned. I see the youth collectively being treated as a prize of sorts that select political movements are chasing after. All our scholars deserve to be educated at our schools, utilizing the tax funding that all of us collectively provide, but they also deserve to be protected while they're being educated, protected from forces without, which is why we have our excellent safety and security folks in technology, but also protected from forces inside, like violent and intimidating behavior from their peers. We've seen an alarming trend away from behavior accountability in our district. If there's one way to mess up a young person, it's to artificially shield them from bearing appropriate consequences for their own actions and to own their own actions. A secondary motive fueling my race is to stand behind weary teachers. Let's restore freedom to our teachers, freedom to simply teach and be themselves rather than champion social movements and attend redundant trainings, and freedom to hold the respect and responsibility bar equally high for all of their scholars in their classrooms with a replenished toolbox of effective strategies to inspire their students and discipline them when necessary. Thank you again for being here tonight.
Thank you. Kelsey?
All right. We all have certain milestones in our life that are very defining for us. 12 years ago, almost to this day, suddenly without warning, I lost my best friend, my unconditional cheerleader in life, my dad, John Dawson, who was a longtime educator and always said, "Education is the key to unlocking dreams." I hold that in my heart deeply and forever, and I am living out that legacy. I apply this belief that education will unlock dreams to our work in the Osseo School District. Our work is to create the path for scholars to make their dreams come true. We know there are challenges that have been exasperated by COVID, by the murder of George Floyd, safety, capacity of schools, discipline, and the list goes on and on. These issues impact all of us, but our scholars will do their best when they know that we believe every scholar is part of our future, and we are dedicated to leaving no talent behind. This district has all the tools and ingredients to create the best solutions to the challenges ahead of us. Our pathway is bright. We will achieve a new, bold, and aspirational vision to unleash the brilliance of each and every scholar. Again, my priorities are safe and welcoming schools, high academic achievement, long-term sustainability. Bottom line, I want to make sure each and every scholar has equitable access and opportunity to a top-notch educational experience. The future of our children rests in the authentic integrity vision, strategic and inclusive mindset of community leaders. We select for key school board positions in our community, and I have proven to be that leader in arguably the toughest and most divisive time in recent history, and will continue to be an exemplary model of that leader, of the exact leader needed to create a pathway for children, educators, schools, and community to be collaborative partners in exceeding standards of achievement, equity, and excellence for years to come. I humbly and excitedly ask for your vote and support. kelseiferasio.com.
Thank you. Tanya?
Thank you again to the sponsors of tonight's forum and for all of you in attendance and for the questions you've raised. Many concerns and priorities were brought forward that highlight the need for improvements while maintaining and growing our areas of strength as a district. I'm excited at the possibilities that lie ahead for us as a district community. I am proud to have led in authoring the strategic plan and the values that we've established. There's still much to do to see this plan through implementation and to build upon it. I will celebrate and invest in the initiatives that yield results for our scholars, and I will constructively question and challenge to make course corrections when we are not achieving those expected outcomes. I'm running for reelection because I know the power of education in changing lives. I know firsthand what it's like to see education as a path out of poverty into achieving dreams. As a coach and mentor, I know that our young people need adults that will champion them, and that parent engagement and partnership is a key ingredient to success. As a professional and organizational change, I also know that culture is the foundation to a thriving environment for scholars, teachers, and staff. We will create a culture of excellence that sets high standards for every scholar, that supports teachers and staff, and empowers them to implement their ideas while proactively addressing the concerns that they raise. The passion I have to help young people succeed is core to who I am and is in the organizations that I support and am involved in, because it's my personal story and it's my purpose. Each scholar in our district has the potential and capability to successfully accomplish their dreams. As a recent district keynote speaker said in the staff kickoff meeting, Steven Peters, "We need to have a mindset of undefeated to turn problems into opportunities. This is what is possible now and in the future." That's why I'm asking for your vote for reelection to the ISD 279 School Board. I will ensure every decision is focused on being undefeated in our mission to unleash the brilliance of each and every scholar. You can learn more about me at tonyasimons.com. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Melody?
Oh, I think, did I screw it up again?
Yep, you're right. Thanks. Thank you, Sarah.
Okay. Well, thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum, and I just want to thank all of you who are here tonight, caring about our students and our next generation, and those of you that are watching online. If I have the privilege and opportunity to serve on our Osseo School Board, what you will receive from me is a transparent and a wholehearted effort to work towards academic environments that is both equitable and excellent for all of our learners. My top priority is to keep our school system focused on the main thing, which is the most important thing, which is why our kids are in school, academic excellence. I desire to help cultivate a culture within our schools that both includes increased parent engagement and opportunities, and also increased trust, transparency, and accountability on all school board activities, classroom learning, and curriculum. Thank you for considering voting for me on November 8th, and it's my promise and pledge that I will put our students first. Thank you.
Thank you. Melody, now.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and listening to this. I'll close us out with, when I became a teacher in the early 2000s, I had no idea that it would birth in me such a passion for students for a lifetime. I didn't have children yet, I was not married, I was single, and I began teaching, and I was trained by some of the best, and I can say that because at this point, I'm a proven educator. Not only have I been a teacher in middle school, high school, at the collegiate level, but I've also been an administrator. I am uniquely positioned to bring together a lot of different pieces of our district to come to a unified understanding and focus. I have been in many diverse settings, able to bring, well, identify the gifts and strengths of every party involved, bring us together, and get something done. I'm very much action motivated. I believe that we build trust with follow-through. When we have results served up, trust will increase. When we are partnering and having relationships with our parents, trust will increase. You guys, the sky's the limit. We have all the recipes for the success. We just need to come together, and I really think that I have the experience and the background to do that. So I hope to have your vote either tomorrow or on up until Election Day, and you can find me at melodybrinkley.com or on Facebook, Melody Brinkley. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Was that everybody? Did I get everybody? Okay. I'm starting to get nervous here. Alzheimer's or something coming on here. All right. We'd like to thank you all, as the audience, for coming tonight, and you can applaud now. We especially like to thank our viewers that are watching now and the recorded versions, and we'd like to thank you for the number of questions that we got. That shows that people are very, very interested in what's happening in their schools. We would especially like to thank the candidates for being part of this process and for being willing to serve our communities. We'd also like to thank our friends at CCX Media for their continued support of the League of Women Voter Forums and our shared mission to provide nonpartisan information for voters to get to know the people who wish to represent them. I would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and not those of the Brooklyn Park, Osseo, Maple Grove League of Women Voters. Remember, if you did not get your question asked tonight, or you have further questions for the candidates, we invite you to contact them directly. Information about your candidates can also be found at vote411.org. Please remember to vote on or before Tuesday, November 8th, as your vote truly counts. Thank you, good evening, and be safe.